Okay, we'll just get a water.
Are they starting now?
I think it's about.
What was this? Well, like, yeah.
Is it?
Search.
Do you know what this one's called?
Um. It should be portable hybrid.
I do, thank you. I have it here.
Yep.
Name, okay.
There's three attendees now. Yeah, we can start anytime.
Are you waiting on us?
Yeah, we're ready when you are.
I think we're ready to go.
Okay, just let me know when you're.
Uh, Luna, are we good? We're good.
Okay, I should start? Okay. Good evening. I'm Michelle Morris, Director of Communications for the Chittenden Solid Waste District, and I'm here to welcome you to the Chittenden Solid Waste District's Public Hearing on the CSWD Materials Recovery Facility Bond Vote. CSWD is holding a special meeting, in other words, a special election, on November 8th, 2022, at all Chittenden County polling locations, asking voters to vote on CSWD's ballot question to approve general obligation bonds to borrow $22 million for the purpose of building a new materials recovery facility. Tonight's hearing is required by Article 5, Section 3 of the CSWD Charter and is a public informational hearing to receive comments and to help you understand the ballot question, the scope of the project, and to give you the opportunity to ask any questions that may help you be better informed. I will be giving a short 20-minute presentation first, and then we will invite questions and comments. But first, I'd like to review some housekeeping and ground rules for this evening. Please keep your cell phones on silent mode, and for Zoom participants, please keep your microphones muted until you are called on if you have a comment or a question. This is a hybrid meeting with participants who may attend via Zoom or in person. It is being recorded to air on CCTV and is being livestreamed on the CCTV YouTube channel. CSWD and CCTV will share those links when they're available in a few days. We will be taking questions and comments from those attending in person first, and then we will be taking questions and comments from participants attending on Zoom. If you're watching the livestream and you'd like to make a comment or ask a question, you will need to log into the Zoom meeting, and you can get that link by visiting cswd.net, going to our calendar, and you'll see that listing there where the link is provided. If you're attending by Zoom, when we ask for questions, you'll raise your hand using the Zoom hand icon, or if you're not sure how to do that, we're monitoring that Zoom meeting, and you can just raise your hand with your video on, and our Zoom monitor will let us know that there's a question. So, without any further ado, I'd like to go into the presentation, and that'll take about 15 to 20 minutes. So we will go full screen here. Excellent, thank you. This is the CSWD MRF Bond Public Hearing, and I'm Michelle Morris, Director of Communications. First, who is CSWD? We're a municipal district created in 1987 by our member towns and cities, and because we are a government arm, we serve the public without profit as a motive, and that's for all of Chittenden County. What we do, we reduce waste and support our members. We educate residents, businesses, schools, and event managers on waste prevention and reduction. We advocate for statewide policies that will reduce waste. We provide grant funding for cleanup and waste reduction projects. We process leftover paint into local color paint. And that's a photo of one of our solid ACE Outreach Coordinators, Ethan Hausman, giving a tour of our materials recovery facility. We also manage materials. We have the Environmental Depot and Rover, which is our hazardous waste facilities, and it's also where we process local color paint. We have an organics diversion facility, which accepts food scraps and yard trimmings from within and outside of our district, where it's turned into compost and other soil amendments. And then we have our drop-off centers located all around Chittenden County, where we accept household trash, food scraps, leaves, blue bin, and other types of recycling, as well as limited amounts of construction debris, tires, and limited hazardous waste. And then finally, we have our materials recovery facility, and that's what we're here about this evening. So what is a materials recovery facility, or MRF, as it's called around the world? A MRF sorts and processes blue bin, in other words, what we call mandatory recyclables, to be sold to end markets and made into new materials and products. CSWD's MRF is the only publicly-owned, single-stream, meaning everything's put in a bin together, and the MRF sorts it out. It's the only one in Vermont that is publicly owned. CSWD owns the MRF building, the property, and the equipment. And why do we need a new one? Well, the current MRF was built in 1993. It's at maximum capacity. It cannot be expanded. The footprint is what it is. We can't make it any larger. And it has one baler. That's the heartbeat of the MRF. It's where all the materials go after they've been sorted and separated, and they get cubed into bales so they can be efficiently shipped to market. Having only one baler means if the baler goes down, that's it. You're dead in the water. The image that's shown there represents, shows the tip floor, where all the material comes into our MRF to be, to start its journey for separation. And that is showing three days of materials when our baler broke down at the current MRF, and we don't have a backup because we can't expand at that site. We have no flexibility, so we can't adapt. If markets change, or if, let's say, I don't know, there's a global pandemic, and you get a huge influx of cardboard because everybody's ordering things, we can't shift our processes to adapt to that big influx of one kind of material. We just have to deal with what we've got. We still process it. It's just harder and less efficient. So it limits the amount, the volume, that Vermonters can recycle. We have no room for growth. As Chittenden County grows, we won't be able to accommodate that. The sorting is very inefficient. Much of it is done by hand, as this image shows here. It's these very hard-working workers who stand and sort out the containers as they go by on the conveyor. And some of that means that we're losing valuable recyclables because humans can't process and see and grab these items fast enough, and it's hard for them to distinguish sometimes between what is a recyclable material or product or package and what isn't. And sometimes things are stuck together, and they get accidentally thrown on the floor and then swept into the dumpster to be sent to the landfill. It's not on purpose, but it just happens by accident because they're working as hard as they can. So we have severely limited storage at our current MRF because of the size. That means some of the materials have to be stored outside, like this very high-value, high-density polyethylene, in other words, milk jugs, and laundry detergent containers that you see baled here. That reduces the quality and the value of the recyclables because as they're out in the weather, in the sunlight, the UV rays, that product, that material gets degraded. And because we have limited space inside, they have to go outside. We don't have a choice until they get put on the truck to be marketed. It also hampers our marketing flexibility because once it's baled, it has to be marketed. We can't say wait out a dip in the markets for more favorable pricing because there just isn't space. So this slide shows the location and rough design of the proposed new MRF that we would build. It's on Redmond Road in Williston, which is owned, the property is owned by CSWD, and it's just about two and a half miles from the current MRF location, which is also in Williston. What you're seeing on this slide, and my cursor is showing, the outline of the current MRF footprint. And that's there just to show the size relativity. So that's the current MRF, and then you can see that the proposed new MRF is roughly 40% larger in size than the current MRF. And it sits well off of Redmond Road, giving a nice, long lead-up for the trucks coming in and out. So here are some of the more benefits to the new MRF. It would provide decades of affordable, in-state recyclables processing, meaning they can just stay right here in Vermont to be sorted and marketed. It will have modern technology to sort those recyclables more efficiently and effectively. It'll have flexibility to adapt to future recycling demands, provide better conditions for the workers, and reduce Vermont's carbon footprint by recycling more products and materials closer to home. Here's what some of that technology looks like. So MRFs of the 21st century, in other words, today, have what are called optical sorters and Eddy currents. The MRFs in Vermont don't have optical sorters at all. This is not brand-new technology. It's been around for decades and is well-proven. How that works, what it does is this orange box here contains very high-speed cameras and infrared lasers. And as the materials flow by on the conveyor underneath it, those cameras and lasers ping off of the products and can instantly identify what that item is made from. They can tell whether it's cardboard, whether it's paper, not just whether it's plastic, but what polymer that plastic is much, much more accurately and more quickly and at a greater volume than a human can do that. And then it instantly just jets it, puts a puff of air, and jets it into the correct bin. This type of sorting and this accuracy is essential for meeting today's quality demands. It can also help alleviate labor shortages. We don't anticipate eliminating jobs. The nature of the jobs will change because there won't be those labor-intensive, hand-sorting at very high volumes, like there at the current MRF. Those jobs would be shifted to some of the technology and quality control, things that humans do really well. Once the machines do their initial sort, the humans will be able to see whether something might have been missed, or they can tweak the machines to make sure they're being most effective for the volume that's coming through. More square footage equals higher quality output because you don't have everything buried a foot deep or six inches deep. It's spread out. More and longer conveyors enable better sorting. Again, before, so it's spread because, excuse me, it's spread out. We'll have adequate indoor climate-controlled bail storage, and all the processing will be indoors. Some of the processing that we have for our glass, our processed glass aggregate, is outside at the current MRF just because we're out of space. All of that will move inside in the new MRF. So future-proofing, what we mean by that is 40% more capacity to process mandatory recyclables will equip us to serve Chittenden County and beyond needs for the next 30 years. We'll be able to adapt to evolving packaging, and that means we'll remove more recyclables from the waste room. We don't know what that looks like yet, but for instance, who knew 20 years ago, 30 years ago, that baby food would come in a pouch? We can't recycle those at the MRF. We don't know what we'll be able yet to recycle at the new MRF, but we know it'll be more flexible and adaptable. Environmental benefits. We'll continue to preserve landfill space. Vermont's down to one public landfill, and that's all we've got, so we need to keep that going as long as we can. The new MRF will recycle up to 70,000 tons every year. The current MRF was designed to handle 25,000 tons a year. It's currently processing around 47,000 tons a year. The new one will be designed for much more than that. So the more you recycle, the more natural resources you're conserving. Trees, water, mined materials that are used to make metals, plastics, all of that. This extended capacity will help us conserve near the equivalent, nearly 28 million gallons of gas annually, and that'll reduce greenhouse gas emissions equal to removing more than 52,000 passenger vehicles from the road. Benefits for the workers. As I mentioned previously, we anticipate maintaining the current 21 jobs at the MRF will create some higher skilled positions and most definitely provide cleaner, brighter, better-ventilated working conditions for these folks. You can see the picture of the current MRF in the lower left-hand corner versus a brighter, more spacious new MRF in the upper right-hand corner. That brings us to funding sources. How are we going to pay for this wonderful new MRF? We are asking for bonding, voters to approve bonding at the general election because we are going to the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank for $16 million. We will be getting a zero-interest loan from the Closed Loop Fund for $6 million. We will be contributing $3.5 million from cash on hand. We are hoping to reduce that amount through EPA grant funding, which has not yet opened, but will be soon. We'll be applying for a maximum award there. And then another half a million dollars in a grant fund from the recycling partnership. So that's a $22 million loan. How we're going to repay that? We'll repay back that loan, the bonding and the note, over 25 years through the MRF's operational revenue. CSWD's municipally-owned MRF will continue to serve the public without profit as a motive, and CSWD will keep fees as low as possible and provide maximum recycling opportunities, even when it's not profitable, because that is our mission. So how can you get your ballot? CSWD is seeking voter approval during this year's November general election, that's on November 8, to borrow $22 million to build the new MRF. Options for getting the CSWD ballot. We were not able to include our ballot in the mailing from the Secretary of State's office due to changes in Vermont's election law that prevented us from including it, and we were also not allowed to mail it ourselves. So you can go to the My Voter page, and the link is there, mvp.vermont.gov. You can get your ballot by calling or visiting your town clerk's office. And you can also go to the polls on November 8. And in Chittenden County, CSWD's ballot will be provided at all Chittenden County polling places on that day. That is the end of this presentation. I understand we have some online Zoom attendees. Do we have any questions from those attendees?
We might ask them to raise their hands. I had one attendee who had noted he might want to make a comment. Peter Sale, if you want to raise your hand if you still do.
Yes, please. In case you didn't hear that, that was John Dorwitt, our Zoom monitor. If you would like to make a comment or ask a question, please raise your hand by using the Zoom Hand Raise utility, or you can turn on your camera and physically raise your actual human hand, and John will call on you, and you can share your comment or question. Alternatively, you could put it in the chat box, and we'll be happy to read it out.
Looks like Peter will make a comment. I'll turn on his mic now and have him answer this question.
Thank you. Go ahead, Peter.
It looks like you're still muted.
And Peter, when you start, could you please state your full name and the town where you're from before your comment or question?
Me, okay?
Yep.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Great. My name is Peter Sale. I live in Burlington. And my main question about the new MRF is how are you guys going to deal with the situation with the problems associated with plastics? You know, my wife and I both recycle as much as we can. We compost at home. So we've got a pretty good grasp of things. But what I've been reading is that plastics are an absolute nightmare for a facility like a MRF. Certainly, given that the the markets aren't there anymore. We used to ship stuff to Malaysia, China. They've turned that away. So, so what sort of revenue, if anything, do you expect or hope to derive from the plastic situation? And I do note that in your talk, you said, you know, we need to do the best we can to cause people to recycle at the highest level, even if at a loss. But it seems to me that this is a real, you know, elephant in the room, and somehow I just don't feel good about, you know, it's great that we're recycling all this plastic, but we have to do something with it. And, you know, ultimately, and hopefully, it doesn't get landfilled because there are no markets or that sort of thing. So I'd just like a comment on that, please.
Absolutely. Peter, thank you so much for that question and comment. We really appreciate it because we know it's on everyone's minds, and there is a lot of concern, legitimate concern and confusion out there because of the type of coverage that's been done on plastics. So I'll try to break this down, and perhaps my colleagues here can let me know if I miss any of your points. But first, the first important point, though this presentation is all about our proposed new materials recovery facility, which is strictly about recycling, our mission and the things we emphasize are the reduce and reuse are the first two Rs in reduce, reuse, recycle. We absolutely advocate, first and foremost, to reduce your waste, prevent waste from the get-go. So anytime you can avoid using single-use products, we certainly want folks to do that. However, that being said, there's still a place for recycling. And several things I want to call out here. Plastics can be a challenge, but one of the reasons the MRF specifications, so in other words, what I'm saying is the things we accept, the things we want you to put in your blue bin are rigid, single-use containers and packaging. And if you really think about that, that's like food and beverage containers, personal hygiene, laundry detergent, cleaners, that sort of thing, non-hazardous products. And when you look at those, those are made from materials that actually have very high value on the market. You mentioned the China issue. The CSWD recyclables are not shipped overseas. They all stay domestically. In the United States, definitely in North America, if not just the US, I can tell you that the certain type of plastic, we call it HDPE, but it's basically your laundry detergent bottles, that sort of thing, and milk jugs go to Alabama to be made into new products. I'm checking with our manager who monitors that and who manages that. So that's, we know that. That's been checked. So these materials are staying domestic. They are not going overseas. They're not being dumped. That high-density polyethylene I mentioned previously, the, if you think of your translucent milk jug, the milk jug that doesn't have color in it really, that is the most valuable plastic. It was bringing more than aluminum on the markets very recently. So these things do have value. That's why it's worth investing in these systems to keep them out of the landfill and keep them in circulation because they're still out there. But these are the types of plastics we're talking about, that we want at this facility, and that these facilities are designed to process. When you put the correct things in your blue bin, and this is all on our website, what should and shouldn't go in there, but when you stick to that criteria, 93%, actually, all of that material gets recycled. 93% of what comes to our MRF currently is being recycled. That other 7% is trash that should never have come there in the first place. Or it's stuff that's too dirty, like your peanut butter jar with peanut butter still stuck in it. We don't want that. We want you to clean it, or we don't want the wrong stuff. So there is a lot of legitimate concern about plastics, but we need to be very clear about what applies to a MRF and what applies to Chittenden County and what applies to Vermont. So have I missed any of the points or issues you raised?
No, I appreciate the response, and it's certainly good to know. And I guess my comment would be that in order for people to stay abreast of what currently is acceptable and proper to put in the blue bin, they really should look at the website and find out there. Or call. I've called before, and it's really great to get a live person on the other end of the phone to say, yeah, you know, we can answer your question. Boom. So that's really helpful.
Thank you so much, Peter, and I appreciate that suggestion. When we do build the new MRF, in preparation for that, we will definitely be launching more public communications to just refresh everybody's knowledge and let them know what those criteria are. So I thank you again for attending, for your interest, and for your concern and asking the question. I'd like to put it out there, if there's anybody else in Zoomland who has a comment or a question. John, can you tell us if there's anyone else waiting?
I don't see any other hands up.
I didn't understand.
I don't see any other hands.
Okay, well, we are, our channels are open. It's just about 6 o'clock. We're here till 7 this evening because that's the time that we set for this meeting. So I'm happy to answer other questions from Peter or anyone else. And our time is available to address those questions. And if anybody else shows up on Zoom, please just let us know, and we'll invite their comments or questions as well. Unless there is an additional comment or question right now, though, I do have a couple of videos I can try to show that show the workings of the current MRF. It was shot about six or seven years ago, but it hasn't changed. And then we have an overview video of who CSWD is and what we do, so I can try to show those. Sound like a plan? Thank you. So it was just mentioned to me, if you are watching on a livestream on the CCTV livestream on their web YouTube channel, you will need to register for the Zoom meeting. And you can get that link on the CSWD website, so cswd.net, and go to our calendar and grab the link there under this event. If you are on the Zoom meeting, please raise your hand, put a comment in the chat, raise your virtual hand or your real hand with Zoom, with your video on, and we will be happy to call on you. So in the meantime, I'm going to see about sharing, running these videos. Pardon the ads. Let me see if I can. Oh, I have to share. I don't know if this is going to work. I can't run it because of the yeah. Sorry, the audio isn't going to work. Oh, well. Oh, well. In the meantime, while they're troubleshooting that, I'm going to see if I can just go to a page that we have on our website that has more information about the new MRF. So if you're interested in learning more about the new MRF, you can go to cswd.net homepage and there is a direct link to the MRF bond fax page. Has some details and it has instructions on how you can get your ballot as well as a fact sheet about the new MRF and a Q and A sheet with some common questions and answers. We're working on seeing whether we can run a couple of videos. We're having some audio challenges. So thank you for bearing with us. In the meantime, if anybody has a question while we're troubleshooting that or a comment, I'm happy to answer that.
Michelle?
Yes.
It looks like Peter has his hand raised, so I'll go ahead and.
All right, Peter.
Yes, hi. Well, I'm back.
Great.
So I've, I find this, uh, topic extremely interesting and, um, I certainly would encourage everybody to, um, visit the MRF, the current one, and certainly when the new one gets built. I have done that. And it's, it's a fascinating window on what happens when you put things into your blue box and where do they go? And, uh, so I have voted positively for this bond. I think it's an absolutely essential thing. And, you know, it's a, it's a really wonderful opportunity that we have that we can put things in a box out on our street in front of where we live and the, uh, city picks it up. So, um, I'm really, uh, encouraged and excited by this whole, uh, aspect.
Great. Well, thank you, Peter, for bringing up tours. I didn't mention that, but I'm glad you did. We do offer public tours of our materials recovery facility. From time to time, we schedule open public tours. Everyone always needs to register, uh, for that. So we can, uh, know who wants to come. If there isn't a public tour scheduled, you're always welcome to reach out to cswd@info@cswd.net or through one of our outreach coordinators or on our contact form on our website, uh, saying that you'd like to join a tour. And even if it's your book club or your business group or just a group of your neighborhood friends, we're happy to show folks how recycling works from the back end and why we need a new MRF. And also, uh, we take kids on tours there from 10 years old or older. Um, and it's a really, as you said, an eye opening way to see what really happens with recycling. So if you're skeptical, if you've been reading the newspapers, it says recycling doesn't work or it's a scam. Please come see how it works and let us answer your questions because we are always happy to talk about this.
Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. This is the CSWD Materials Recovery Facility Bond Issue Public Hearing. We are working with CCTV right now to try to get some audio working so we can show a couple of videos. But, uh, we have gone through the presentation. If you're just joining us and we are now open to comments and questions. And you, if you're joining on Zoom, please just raise your hand, leave a question in the chat. Uh, yes, I have a comment or question from the audience here.
Thank you. Will you assess the number of towns and cities that could be working with them?
Our intention is definitely not to assess towns a fee for the new MRF. We, um, the only time we've assessed our member towns was in 1992 when the fifth district was first created, um, to get us off the ground until we had the MRF built in 1993 and started receiving revenue from that. Uh, we intend to reduce the, um, not the, we've reduced the cost of the facility, but we intend to get all the funding we can through zero interest loans and grants and other methods to, um, pay for the cost of this MRF, uh, over time and not have any of that burden fall on our member towns and cities. I see we have two new attendees here on, and in person, we've gone through the presentation. Um, you're welcome to ask questions. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's the comment and question period. So if you would like to ask anything or say anything, please state your name and your town and please let us know what, what your question is. Not to put you on the spot. Okay, you know, I could, um, run through the presentation. Again, we have plenty of time. We're here till seven. And so I think that makes sense, right? So if CCTV is up for that, okay. Are there any other questions on Zoom, John? I don't see any new participants, but let us know. Otherwise, um, okay, I will just run through the presentation again. I'm always happy to talk to a live audience. And let me get that up here. All right, are we set? All right, take two. This is the, I'll give you the little intro as well, just so you know what this is about. So this is, I'll give you the readers, the Cliff's Notes version. Uh, this is the CSWD public hearing on the CSWD Materials Recovery Facility Bond Vote. We are, Article five and section three of our charter requires this hearing in, before a bond vote, and it's a public informational hearing to receive comments and help you understand the ballot questions. So on November 8th, we'll be asking you to vote on the CSWD bond issue, um, to borrow $22 million to build a new MRF. So this is just to help you understand the scope of the project, give you the opportunity to ask questions and help you be better informed. So here's the presentation. It's about 15, 20 minutes and then I'm happy to take any questions after that from in person or on Zoom. So I'm Michelle Morris, Director of Communications. And first, I'm just going to give you an idea of who a CSWD is, if you don't already know. We are a municipal district, so, um, we are an arm of government. We're not state or county government technically. We are a municipality. We were created in 1987 by our member towns and cities, which means every town and city in Chittenden County is a member of CSWD. And we were created to serve their, um, solid waste management needs and help our members reduce and manage their waste and meet federal and state requirements as well. That means we serve the public without profit as a motive because we're not a business and, and we are, um, not in it for stakeholders, shareholders or profit. What we do, we reduce waste and support our members by educating residents, businesses, schools and event managers. Really anybody in our district on waste prevention and reduction. We advocate for statewide policies that will reduce waste through programs such as extended producer responsibility, product stewardship that encourages manufacturers to take their responsibility for the products they produce. We provide grant funding for cleanup and waste reduction projects and we process leftover paint into local color paint that we sell to anybody who wants it. And that's a picture from one of our tours and one of our outreach coordinators conducting that tour. We manage materials. So this is a map of Chittenden County and all those dots show the various locations that are owned and operated by CSWD. The MRF actually is owned by CSWD and operated under contract. The orange dots are our drop off centers. The green is our compost facility and the little blue dot is the current location of our current MRF. So we have an environmental depot in Rover. That's the dark red dot, uh, where we process hazardous waste and we do the paint processing. We have an organics diversion facility. That's a fancy name for our compost facility where we take food scraps and yard trimmings and turn them into valuable compost and other soil amendments. And as I mentioned, we have the drop off centers where you can bring your household trash, organics, uh, recycling and some other materials. And then we have the Materials Recovery Facility, which is generally called in the industry a MRF for short or MRF. So what is a MRF? The MRF's sole purpose is to sort and process blue bin recyclables. So when you put it in your bin, all mixed together, it goes through the MRF and the MRF sorts it into different streams of, um, homogeneous or consistent materials. So it can be sold to markets and made into new materials and products. CSWD's MRF is the only one that's publicly owned, so it's not owned by a private business. It's the only publicly owned, single stream, meaning everything's mixed together in Vermont. We own the MRF building, the property and the equipment. Here's why we need a new one. The current facility was built in 1993. It's located on Avenue C in Williston. It's at maximum capacity. It can't, we don't have space to expand the building and there's no room inside the building to expand. Uh, we have a baler. The baler is the heartbeat of any MRF. Uh, that's the machine that takes all the materials once it's been sorted and separated into those single streams and compress, excuse me, compresses it into a brick so it can be efficiently put on a truck and shipped to market. So we don't have a backup baler and that picture that you see there is the tip floor. So that's, that's just the place where the haulers bring their loads in and they tip it on the floor and then all that stuff you see there is separated out into different streams and baled. So normally only this back pile in the back is about what we get in a day. This was three days worth of material after the baler broke down. And we have to, we still keep processing it. It, it gets recycled, but we have to ship it out of state or elsewhere in, in state down to Rutland if the baler breaks. So there's no flexibility. We can't adapt. We can't change streams. We can't shift labor. It limits consequently the amount that Vermonters can recycle because as Chittenden County grows and there's more products to be recycled, we don't have capacity to manage those. It's inefficient hand sorting largely. That line that you see there and those hardworking, they are all fellows at the time. Are doing that all day long. That's their job is to just separate out and pick out the specific materials from that container line. And because it's so human labor dependent to sorting containers, that means sometimes we're losing valuable containers, valuable recyclables because the machinery isn't efficient and effective enough at putting things into the right stream. The materials you see there on the floor are, um, where those workers toss those items that don't belong at the facility and they end up going to the landfill. And sometimes they make mistakes and sometimes things are stuck together and they can't separate them fast enough. Other drawbacks of the current facility is limited storage because we can't expand. Some of the baled material has to be stored outside and that's just really not ideal. Even in the summer, UV, UV light degrades plastics. So what you're seeing there is milk jugs in this white bale. That's high density polyethylene plastic. We just had a gentleman ask about the value of plastics. This type of plastic here was bringing more on the open market than aluminum this summer. It's an extremely high value plastic and it's very much in demand. All of these plastics are marketed in the US. None of the CSWD MRF materials go overseas. They're all, uh, marketed domestically, um, maybe some in Canada. So having these sit outside reduces the quality and the value of recyclables. We may not get as much on the market because they're not as high value or high grade after they've been sitting out in the weather. And it hampers our marketing flexibility. If something happens and, um, the markets dip because there's a recession briefly or there's some blip in shipping. We can't ride that out. There's no space. Once it's baled, we have to move it because we don't have space to store it. So how do we propose solving that with the new MRF? Well, here's a proposed concept, um, design for the new facility. The location has been decided. Our board has agreed that it should be located on property that CSWD owns on Redmond Road in Williston. Um, it's right across from where our current administration office is and it's near our current compost facility. So it's already there. This, um, blue square has been provided just to show you the size relevance. Uh, that's the current size of the, the size of the current MRF. And it's shown next to the square footage of the proposed new MRF. So you can see how much more space we would have. Other benefits would, or benefits rather of the new MRF would, it would provide decades of affordable in-state recyclables processing. Would have modern technology to sort the recyclables more efficiently and effectively. Flexibility to adapt to future recycling demands. Whoops, I'm sorry. Better conditions for workers. And that would all mean that we're reducing Vermont's carbon footprint because we would be recycling more and keeping it closer to home instead of having to ship it somewhere else to be sorted. So the new MRF would have technology benefits. Um, these are not crazy, cutting edge technology. This is tried and true technology that's being used all over the world, um, for decades, just not here in Vermont. An optical sorter is, uh, an example is this orange box you see here and the way it works is the material flows underneath it on a conveyor. And as it goes through, we would have multiple optical sorters. The sorter, um, pings off infrared lit, uh, rays and uses extremely high speed cameras to identify what the material is. You can use it for paper. You can use it for different types of plastics. Um, and we can program it to sort however we want. And then that blows a puff of, uh, jet of air blows it into the correct bin. These machines can do this far, far more accurately and quickly than a human sorter. That doesn't mean we're eliminating those human sorter jobs. What we're doing is we're shifting them to quality control, which is a much better, um, job for a human and it's, uh, humans are better sorted to that sort of job than a machine. So the machine does high volume repetition, things like that. And then the person checks the machine after the fact. And the human new jobs would also include, um, workers who would be trained to program the optical sorters and help them adapt to different streams. And eddy current is just a way to sort aluminum. So it basically gives that aluminum a charge that repels it into the correct bin. So as it says here, um, this technology is essential for meeting quality standards because it, like I said, it's more accurate and, uh, can do things more quickly. And it doesn't make those mistakes and misses. And then you have workers who double check the machines. So capacity benefits, more square footage is higher quality output because you can stretch out your conveyors. You don't have it deep. You know, if you remember that other photo I showed of the people doing sorting, that material was piled up on that conveyor. Here you have stretched out. There's more space between the materials and they can be sorted more efficiently. We'd have adequate indoor bail storage. We wouldn't have to be putting things outside and all the processing is indoors. Currently, um, this last part of our glass processed glass aggregate processing has to be outdoors and that causes us all kinds of challenges in the winter. Future proofing, so 40% more capacity. That's that bigger footprint, more conveyors, more capacity will equip us for the next 30 years. We would also have a backup baler, which I forgot to mention before. So if one baler breaks down, we would always have a backup. It would also enable us to shift streams to different bailers and use them both at the same time if we needed to. Give us the ability to adapt to evolving packages, evolving packaging. Um, and ultimately that means we'll be keeping more materials out of the waste stream, out of the landfill. Environmental benefits, speaking of the landfill, would mean we'd be continuing to preserve our dwindling landfill space here in Vermont. The current MRF was designed to process 25,000 tons of material a year. It's operating at about 47,000 tons a year. So it's well over what it was designed for. The new one would be designed, uh, to be capable to process up to 70,000 tons every year. So again, it's roughly 40% more capacity, not just in size, but in the amount it could process. roughly forty percent more capacity, not just in size, but in the amount it could process. Recycling seventy thousand tons of material would just mean conserving that much more natural resources, all the um, finite natural resources, trees, water, mined materials like iron ore, minerals and sand that are made to use new products would not need to be harvested or mined, um, because we would have recycled feedstock for it. That would help us conserve nearly twenty-eight million gallons of gas annually and reduce our greenhouse gas emissions equal to removing more than fifty-two thousand passenger vehicles from the road. And these, this data all comes from the EPA Warm Model Version Fifteen and our MRF data. Benefits for the workers mean, as I mentioned, we would maintain the current number of jobs that we have at the MRF, create higher skilled positions. And this is really critical. We would provide cleaner, brighter and better ventilated working conditions for those hardworking folks at the MRF. If you haven't been on a tour, I encourage you to take one and you'll see what the current MRF conditions are like. So funding sources for this new materials recovery facility include sixty million dollars from the municipal bond bank, a six million dollars zero percent loan from the closed loop fund. You add those together. That's the twenty-two million dollars um, that is on the bond ballot. So that's the bond and the note that we would be repaying. CSWD would be contributing three and a half million dollars from our cash on hand. And then another half million dollar grant from the recycling partnership. Uh, the less EPA grant funding is there's another grant opportunity that has not yet opened and we'll be applying for the maximum amount from EPA to reduce our cash contribution when we're able to apply for that. So then how we would repay the loans, we would repay back the bond in the note over twenty-five years from operational revenue generated at the MRF. Our municipally owned MRF would continue to be able to serve the public without profit as a motive. And that means we would be able to keep our fees as low as possible and provide maximum recycling opportunities even when it's not profitable. By that I mean is the markets dip up and they go down, they dip up and they go down. Recycling, waste reduction, reduction, reuse and recycling is our mission. So we keep it going through those dips and ups and downs in the market. How to get your ballot? Um, due to changes in Vermont election law, CSWD was not allowed to include this bond issue in the general election ballot. Uh, the secretary of state could not mail it to voters and we could not mail it to voters. Um, it just wasn't allowed under the law. But there are three easy ways to get a ballot. You can request it from your My Voter page. It's available in every CSWD or Chittenden County town and city on your My Voter page. You can call or visit your town clerk's office to the, to pick it up. And if you vote in person on November eighth, you'll be able to get this ballot uh, at all Chittenden County polling places. All right, that's the presentation. And I'm happy to answer questions either from anybody who has joined us via Zoom or from folks in person if you'd like to comment or ask a question. If you do want to, I just asked that you share your name and the town you're from. Yes. Okay. Oh, we have a mic for you.
A microphone and everything.
Might be a little bit of a stretch.
Rachel from Burlington. Yep.
Yes. Okay. Hi, um, I'm Rachel Elliott. I'm from Burlington. Um, and I'm also a reporter with the community news service, um, which is run through UVM. I'm wondering if, you know, you could talk a little bit about any expected impact on like the land and surrounding area, like around the proposed MRF? Just in terms of like maybe air quality or impacting water quality, stuff like that.
Oh, well, we have um, the first step in, we have a fact sheet actually available on this out front. I think you may have picked one of those up. Shows the uh, one of the first steps is actually permitting and design. So um, we don't anticipate any impacts because that'll all be handled and it's very thorough uh, vetting that the state does. And um, the city of Williston, we've been working very closely with as well, with their select board and their um, development review board. To ensure that um, they're aware of all the steps we're taking and it would be very thoroughly vetted um, and permitted to meet Act two fifty and all the other requirements that Vermont has for those kinds of impacts. Does that answer your question? Okay. Yeah, you're welcome. And one of the reasons we've um, landed, our board landed on that site. We looked at sites all over Chittenden County. But it um, is well situated, well off the road and doesn't have, it's already industrially zoned. It doesn't have um, other areas around and it can be sighted in a way that minimizes impacts. It has a very long road leading into it to get traffic off of Redmond Road and, and allow safe ingress and egress in and out of the large trucks that use the MRF. And it's about two point six miles from the current MRF location. You're welcome. Thanks for the question. Anything else? We're here till seven. We've got about half an hour left. Um, were we able to get the video, audio? Possible? We had a couple of videos that we just wanted to share if we could.
Amy's gonna try and share her screen and audio.
We're working with CCTV to see if we can um, get these videos to play. We tried earlier and the audio wasn't working. The problem with unmuting here. Okay. Yep. I'm gonna yield to CCTV. Are we ready to play or?
Luna. Are they good to play? Okay, you should be good.
Okay, let's see if I can just play this directly. I had the tabs open if I can.
Hello, I'm Sarah Reeves, Executive Director of the Chittenden Solid Waste District. Our job at CSWD is to help you make less waste and to help you safely handle the waste that you do produce. We have answers to your questions on recycling, compost, hazardous waste and household trash. CSWD's facilities manage all kinds of materials. Maybe you're familiar with the friendly staff at our drop off centers where we handle trash, recycling, food scraps and so much more. Or maybe you've brought hazardous waste or leftover paint to the environmental depot. Gardeners may know that Green Mountain Compost is made at CSWD's compost facility from local food scraps and leaves. Half of Vermont's blue bin recycling is processed at CSWD's publicly owned materials recovery facility. We're award winning educators. We advocate for statewide waste reduction policies and we work with local reuse programs to further those goals. We do all of this without any revenue from property taxes. We're funded by four main sources. Fees charged at our facilities, a fee on every ton of Chittenden County trash disposed in the landfill, revenue from selling materials we collect and process, and revenue from products we make like compost and local color paint. I invite you to find out more about our services and programs by visiting cswd.net or by giving us a call. Thank you for all you do to reduce your waste and to keep Vermont green.
If you're going back to school, before you submit your essays.
Um, so I'm sorry about the delay on the audio there, but I have a second video that's about six minutes and it was shot at the current MRF about six or seven years ago, but nothing has changed. That features a former CSWD staff member and I hope the delay isn't too annoying, but we'll give this one a shot too.
Your blue bin. Think it's just another place to put your household waste? Think again. The things you put in this blue bin are actually valuable resources that are about to embark on an amazing journey we call recycling. This plastic bottle, when it falls into the bin, it's about to take a magic carpet ride to a new life. It could become another bottle or something like this fleece. This is the first stop on the journey, CSWD's Materials Recovery Facility or MRF for short. Thanks to you, more than eighty million pounds of recyclables are processed in this building each year. They go through a wild series of spinning discs, speeding conveyor belts, whirling magnets. It's sort of like a Willy Wonka factory for recyclables. When they come out the other side, they're shipped off to market to be made into new products. Trucks come into this building. We call it the tip floor. That's because this is where trucks literally tip their recyclables out onto the floor. It can look like quite a mess, but that's only because the MRF hasn't worked its magic yet. Another machine, a skid steer or a loader pushes it all onto the first conveyor belt where it heads up the hill and into the pre-sort room. The pre-sort room is where the first line of workers take off bags of shredded paper for special handling. They also take out items that made it into your bin by mistake, like styrofoam, plastic bags and hazardous materials. It takes concentration and quick hands, but it's important to get these contaminants out now. Contaminants lower the value of recyclables and they could get caught into the machinery or even injure workers. Cardboard is the first material to be sorted. A screening machine with spinning discs pulls off big pieces of cardboard while everything else drops through it onto a conveyor below. After the cardboard, glass is next. Your recyclables go through something called a bottle breaker, which does exactly what it sounds like. It crushes glass into small pieces. That crushed glass falls through a screen onto its own special conveyor. The rest of your recyclables are still on the move. They're heading for two more sorting screens. We call paper, like newspaper and office paper, fibers. These items float on top of the screens while containers like plastic bottles and metal cans bounce down the hill. The fibers head for a conveyor where workers pull out box board and cardboard for separate recycling. And they pull off any trash that might have sneaked by the first step. The plastic and metal containers are headed for a special machine called a ballistic screen whose rows of paddle arms weed out any leftover fibers and drop the containers onto their own conveyor. The workers on the next line are looking for plastic containers like jugs, tubs and bottles. These plastics may end up as plastic or composite lumber, bottle caps, or even fleece sweaters. Each worker on this line is looking for a different type of plastic to sort. And each type of plastic needs to be kept separate. That's because every type of plastic is different. Companies that buy the kind of plastic used in water and soda bottles, for example, don't want other plastics. The color of the plastic can also make a difference. A colorless plastic milk jug is worth more because it can be made into more things than one that has been colored orange or blue. Next up, metal. Ferris metals or metals with iron in them are in for a fun ride as they pass under a high powered electromagnet which lifts them off the conveyor and drops them down a chute into a bunker below. The last sorter on the line is looking for aluminum. Aluminum cans, aluminum pipe pans, big balls of aluminum foil. And those products will be recycled into just about any other product you can think of made of aluminum. Aluminum siding, engine parts or another aluminum can. After all, the paper, plastics and metal are sorted out. They're each baled into giant cubes that weigh up to seventeen hundred pounds apiece. These bales will be loaded onto tractor trailer trucks and sold to companies that will recycle them into new products. These bills are worth a lot of money. Some are worth thirty dollars, some are worth more than seven hundred dollars. Each year, the MRF sells an average of four million dollars worth of recyclables. But wait, we're not done yet. Remember that bottle breaker? Well, that broken glass took an exciting trip of its own, past vacuums, fans and magnets that picked out any paper, plastic or metal bits that may have gotten mixed in. The glass then goes through a spinning cylinder called a trommel and the end product is used in road building projects and in drainage projects. That's the end of this part of the amazing journey we call recycling. If you were a newspaper or a plastic bottle, your journey would have taken you only a half an hour from door to door. If you ever have a question about what you can recycle in Chittenden County, check out our A to Z list on cswd.net or give us a call at eight seven.
All right. Well, those are the two videos that we wanted to show. One just again tells you a little bit more about what CSWD does. And the second one that we showed is was shot at the current MRF. It's not a whole lot different. We've added some equipment to the glass processing. But the volume is still about roughly the same. Instead of eighty million uh, pounds, it's higher than that now that we're processing because it's more like forty-seven thousand tons a year. And I don't think there's any other significant changes to speak of. What's up? It's worn out. It's just that it's worn out. Yeah. So that was, like I said, that's getting pretty old already. Um, we are here at the CSWD um, Materials Recovery Facility Public Hearing on the Bond Ballot Initiative. Uh, that is happening on November eighth at all Chittenden County polling locations. And we'll be asking voters to vote on CSWD's ballot question to approve general obligation bonds to borrow twenty-two million dollars for the purpose of building a new materials recovery facility. We're here just so folks can make comments, ask questions and hopefully provide as much information as anyone wants on this issue as well as on how to um, get your ballot. If you haven't received your ballot, your CSWD ballot, we were not allowed to include it in the general election ballot. Mailing and uh, we also were not allowed to send it to voters, but you can get it from your town clerks. You can go to the Vermont My Voter page or you can get it at all Chittenden County polling places on November eighth to vote. Do we have any other questions on the Zoom meeting? I'm not seeing participants. If you are a participant on the Zoom meeting, um, then.
We have one from Peter.
Oh, yes, please. Go ahead. Please state your name and town when you're making a comment or a question.
Yes, uh, Peter Sale Burlington. So um, those videos were, I found very informative. It prompted me to ask uh, two questions. Totally different. I believe that black plastic is currently not accepted in the uh, the blue bins because of its difficulty in recycling it. Is that because of the dye that's used to, to make it black? And it prompted me to think why aren't, why isn't there a use for that plastic? Because I mean, we, we all use it in one degree or another and of course have to throw it out. But um, I, I would think things like uh, plastic furniture for your lawn or deck that um is low maintenance to no maintenance. Seems like it could be used for something like that. And you know, any number of other uses. Uh, so that's one question and comment. My second one is I remember reading, it was either in seven days or and comment. My second one is, I remember reading, it was either in Seven Days or a VT Digger article, probably within the last year, about an incidence of PFOAs being found in compost. And, of course, nobody wants that, but I wondered if CSWD tests for that in your compost, and if not, if there are measures forthcoming to do that.
Well, thank you again for those questions, Peter. We appreciate it. Regarding, I'll take the second one first. Regarding PFOAs, I would really prefer to keep this meeting to the Materials Recovery Facility topics, because that's what the public expected to get when they saw us advertise this meeting. So I'm happy to address that separately offline if you'd like to send us your question. The only comment I would like to make about PFOAs is one of the challenges is that they are everywhere. They're in our bodies, they're in our air, they're in our water, and so that's one of the difficulties with grappling with this issue of PFOAs. At any rate, we're happy to talk with you about that offline, but I really need to keep this because of how we publicized it to the Murph bond topics, but thank you for asking that. Regarding black plastic, that's a great question. You're correct. We do not want that at the Materials Recovery Facility. There are many reasons black plastic is problematic. One of those is that, remember, if you think about how the Murph works, the point of a whole, the whole point of a Murph is that it is designed to separate and sort different types of materials into those like streams, so homogeneous streams. And as Claire told you in the video, a white plastic milk jug has to go with another white plastic milk jug because of the value of that. And what we know is that all those milk jugs are made from the exact same kind of polymer. It's called high-density polyethylene, and it has a very high value. We also know that water bottle and beverage bottles are made from a different kind of polymer called polyethylene terephthalate, or PET, or P E T E is what you'll sometimes see. Those things don't want to be mixed. Buyers who buy one thing don't want the other thing. So we need, the job of the Murph is to keep them separate. Part of the problem with black plastic is the only thing it has in common, that plastic has in common, is that it's black. You can have a PET black tray, you can have an HDPE black tray, you can have it be polyvinyl chloride PVC, which is not anything anybody wants. So they're made of different materials, and the equipment, the humans can't tell what it is. Even the equipment, optical sorters, and that sort of equipment cannot tell the difference between those things when they're black plastic. Another problem is that black plastic items like plant pots and things have a lot of fillers in them. They're not a pure polymer. They have all these low-value, kind of what the industry thinks of as trash fillers that cause problems in the recycling process. So the solution to this is not to try to figure out better ways to recycle it, but the solution is to work upstream, which CSWD has staff doing, on product stewardship, extended producer responsibility. And we have been extremely active in that and continue to work to put extended producer responsibility laws in place, and we'll be working in the legislature again this year on an EPR initiatives around products and packaging to help work upstream and try to get manufacturers to have more responsibility for what they produce and to ensure that it's either reducing as much waste as they can, or that it has the ability to be recycled in commonly-found recycling systems. And there's been a lot of success with that already, and we're also working with a consortium of industry and government groups that is identifying certain types of plastic that we are advocating to eliminate completely. And polystyrene is one of those, which is, in another word, Styrofoam, is the brand name for most of it, but it's called expanded polystyrene or EPS. So there are a lot of different ways to attack that. That's kind of a long answer, but black plastic is difficult, and it's complicated for those reasons. So I hope I answered those questions adequately for you, and I'd like to offer, if anybody else has comments or questions, either in person or on Zoom.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, another question in person.
Hi, Rich Elliott from Burlington again. I'm wondering what the impact of the new Murph will be on, like, consumer fees?
Could you mention what you think, you mean, like, what you pay?
Yeah, like what residents pay for recycling.
Right.
Will that change? If so, how?
So, the question is, will the new Murph impact what residents pay for recycling? Will it change, and if so, how? The answer, again, is not a straight line, because this is Vermont, and everything is hyper-local, and it's a little different. So here in Chittenden County, we have two communities that contract. In Burlington, the city picks up recycling, and residents are charged a fee for that as part of their taxes. So the city decides how much of their costs they pass on to those residents. We play no role in that. In another town in Chittenden County, the town contracts with a hauling company, and residents pay for the service also to the town. Everywhere else in Chittenden County, individuals and businesses must contract privately with a hauling company, a private business, to pick up your recycling. That hauling company chooses what costs they pass on to the consumer. Their costs include labor, insurance, fuel, equipment, all of those kinds of things. And part of those costs is the tip fee that they pay at the CSWD Murph. So currently, that tip fee, and basically that's every time they bring a load in, they pay a per-ton tip fee. So currently, it's $80 a ton. The tip fee is what we charge at the Murph to cover the gap in our expenses that is not covered by the revenue we receive from selling recyclables. We have kept our tip fee very steady. We don't change it depending on the market. Private Murphs change sometimes from month to month, or even more, but we don't do that because we are trying to keep things steady for the public and the haulers. Again, we don't dictate what the hauler passes on to their customers. So we have modeled, going forward, a steady tip fee. In other words, no change from the current tip fee. Going forward, that's been a 10-year average. Our July 22, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting, we had a presentation from our Finance Director and Executive Director to our Board of Commissioners that outlines cash flow assumptions, and it includes a conservative inbound tonnage. So, you know, that the more tons we receive in, the more tip fee we receive. So we have to, that's one of the variables, as well as 12 other variables that we took into consideration. So, long-term, we're modeling a 10-year average tip fee, which is $80 a ton, and that's the current tip fee. So it's not a straight line, but those are the factors. We do have that memo available on our website, on our Board of Commissioners page, under the July 22, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting, that you're welcome to reference, and has all the details there. Did that answer your question adequately?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, probably more than you even wanted. Sure. Any other questions, either from the Zoom or in person? It's 10 of 7. We're here for 10 more minutes, keeping this open for the CSWD Public Hearing on the CSWD Materials Recovery Facility Bond Vote that is occurring on November 8, or can be voted on anytime via mail-in ballot. Again, as a reminder, to get your CSWD ballot, we could not mail it to voters, and it could not be provided by the Secretary of State due to changes in Vermont election law, but you can get it from the My Voter page. You can request it from your town clerk, or it will be available, and it will be available at all Chittenden County polling places on Yes, question?
I have a comment.
You want to get the mic, please, so it's recorded? And your name?
Hi, this is Jen Holiday. I'm with the Chittenden Solid Waste District. I'm a Heinsburg resident. An observation slash comment. I haven't looked at the video of, the Murph video, for quite some time, and it struck me, in watching it, how many workers there were in the fiber line, making sure that they pick off contaminants and that the paper is as clean as possible. And if you visit our Murph today, you will find by far less people there. In fact, I have been there where there has been nobody doing that sorting, or I should say picking the contamination. It's not actual sorting. And that is one of, you know, that is just one of many, many, many reasons why we need a new facility with this new, modern equipment. It is very difficult to get staff and maintain staff at the current Murph, and the equipment can't pick that contamination or separate the paper to the quality that it needs to be separated to. So it was just an observation that I had this moment of realization, looking at a video that is, what, six, seven years old?
Correct.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah, so as Jen notes, and it gives me the opportunity to comment on another point that is often surprising to people. Roughly 75% of all the recyclable material that comes to the Murph is what we call fiber, paper or cardboard. People are often really surprised to hear that. Only 6% of everything comes, is a container of some sort. And by, or actually, yeah, 6% is containers, let's see, 75% is definitely the fibers. Yep, and about 15% is glass, which is very, very heavy. 2% is steel cans, and then, as I mentioned previously at some point, about 7% of what comes to the Murph is trash, stuff that should not have come. And that's actually an extremely low number for a facility, a single-stream facility, and our community should be very proud of the great job they do, but it is a hard-working Murph that processes everything. As Jen noted, in the video we showed, there were probably seven or so sorters on what we call the fiber line. So the first thing that happens is the paper and cardboard, again, which is 75% of everything we get by volume, I mean by weight, is mechanically separated by machines from the containers. And then it goes through a couple of different machine sorting, and then that fiber line goes out, and normally you have several people standing there pulling off what Jen called contamination, and that's really things like plastic bags, or any filmy plastic. That's a lot of what gets through because the machinery we have can't sort it out. The new optical sorters that we talked about in the presentation would be able to separate that stuff out right off the bat. That fiber line, today, has, at best, a couple of sorters on it because the labor environment is so difficult, and we can't get people to work there. We just can't find people to fill those jobs. So this new facility would help alleviate those kinds of labor shortages and still ensure high-quality materials going out. The only other machinery or equipment that we have at the current Murph is an electromagnetic electromagnet, which was highlighted in the video, and that pulls up the cans that have ferris or iron material in them. Any other questions related to Jen Holiday's comment, or the breakdown of materials that come to the Murph? They're all, as I mentioned, currently marketed. They're not going overseas. They're being kept domestically and turned into things like new paint cans, plastic paint cans, carpet, that sort of thing, being kept in circulation to be made into new materials. This is the final four minutes of CSWD's Public Bond Hearing for the public to ask questions, make comments, in preparation for the special meeting, which is essentially a special election on November 8, at all Chittenden County polling locations, asking voters to vote on CSWD's ballot question to approve general obligation bonds to borrow $22 million for the purpose of building a new Materials Recovery Facility. We appreciate everyone who attended in person or via Zoom, and anybody who wants to watch this later. It has been livestreamed on the CCTV YouTube channel, and CCTV is recording it, and CCTV and CSWD will be sharing the link to the recording in the coming days as soon as it's available. So if you have your friends, family, neighbors, pets, you would like to recommend watching this and being as informed as they can, you will have that link and can go to this recording and watch it at your leisure. Any last questions on Zoom? John Dorwart, who's monitoring our Zoom?
None that I see.
Okay, I think we've answered our questions live. It's 6:58. I think we're safe to wrap it up. Thank you to everybody who attended and to CCTV for your assistance. Have a good evening.